All right, oh, three, one. All right, there's good, people are gonna wanna say some things tonight. Hope we get through this without having, Rich, you'll keep a bu- uh, thing on your seat and delete that out if you have to.
Put your finger on it when I talk.
Very quickly, the first time I ever met John, he was sitting in that seat in the corner in the front row during the interview process when we hired him. And I wasn't sure he was the guy originally, but I'm glad he was the guy and has been the guy and let other people talk and go from there. Who had, Paul, what are we doing first?
Presentation?
Yeah. You wanna do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, for any of the members of the board wanna start? Get something off your chest while we can. Seriously.
John, from me to you, I just wanna thank you for being a fantastic town administrator, both as a member of the Board of Selectmen and as an employee. And one thing that I find very admirable about you is how you constantly say we have the best employees. Mike and I agree with you quite a bit on that, but um, as a resident, as an employee, as a selectman, thank you for all years and of service in the town of Burlington.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, actually, you know, there's a number of things I'd like to be able to say. I see Kim in the front row there, so we won't say too, too much, but honestly, though, John, in the, you know, the short, the seven years you and I have worked together, you've tackled some, some major nagging issues in town that had long been put on the, on the back burner. And I admire you for that, for having the foresight to go after those things and, and see them through. Fire station for one, Center Street, MWRA project, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, I tell people oftentimes that, you know, each, each Monday night when I take my seat here, I learn something new. And I, I have you to thank for that, so I wish you the best.
Thank you.
In your retirement.
Thank you. And it's only been seven years?
Yes.
Well, it seems a lot. Come on, Joe, let her in.
Thank you. Well, I'm actually gonna be good tonight. I'll get you tomorrow night, don't worry about it. Can't do it on TV, it's not good. He'll be holding that button all night long. John, I don't know how to say thank you. I've learnt a lot from you over the, over the past four years that I've been on the Board of Selectmen. I got the pleasure of having Mr. Mercy here when I first started, but our conversations are quite interesting in the morning when I do call you for a question and when I get, "Yeah, pain in the ass, what do you want?" That's the first thing he says to me, he says, "Okay, I got the right guy." The other thing I'd like to say is you've done a fantastic job with this town, and Jimmy's right about always promoting our people that work for this town. And we do, we have a great staff, every single fire, police, DPW, they're all just fantastic. Now, Kim, I'm so sorry. You better never retire, because if you're gonna spend 24 hours with him every day, I know you love him, I know, I get the whole thing, but there's a long road ahead for you. You better think about what you wanna do for the rest of your career, all right? But John, seriously, thank you. Thank you for everything you've taught me on this board, appreciate it.
All right, let's start with this, Paul, why don't we bring this in? You know, there, there's always a question as, you know, what, what do we give as a gift of remembrance that they'll enjoy having? And we thought we'd go with the traditional chair. John, a picture has to be taken with you in the chair, so let's get up here. You want us just behind or up there?
Up there's good, yeah, come in behind the chair. Put you closer.
Heavy duty. Yeah, which I don't want up on the floor.
They wouldn't do that to the ladies.
Slot me behind me, not a good thing.
There we go, ready, look in right there, please, one, two, three. Perfect, stay right there.
Anybody else wanna take any pictures?
Chief, can we get your hat one time on?
Hold on, hold on, we got one more.
Couple more pictures, they're gonna go over here.
Good? All right.
While you, while you're still up there, can I give you a couple over? Can I come up with you and?
Go right ahead, yep.
Later, but I don't wanna have to keep coming up and down. Yeah, can you be in? Before you listen up again.
I know you must be. It's usually me getting the toss and stuff out of it, so.
You didn't nice the place to get there, you go like you like each other, that's it. We good?
Hold on. Okay.
Just talking up.
All set, thank you.
You got all the bones pretty good?
You shouldn't be going too far, come back in the middle here. By the way, this is a smile I had at planning board the other night. All right, you can sit in.
Minus, minus esteem?
Yes, minus esteem. Ken Gordon?
John, it's a pleasure on behalf of the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to recognize not only your seven years of service here as town administrator for Burlington, but also your 40 years of service in municipal management and the years leading up to that. It's really been a pleasure working with you for these past seven years. You've given great advice and you've, as Mike said, you've, you've overseen such progress here in the town of Burlington. Since we've worked together, we've seen the development of areas like Third Avenue, District. You've, 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 you've overseen crisis situation like the fire that, that we had here several years ago, and you've always acted with professionalism and you've always been reliable as, to me, as a source of advice, so, so thank you for that. I just overlooked just a few notes, I saw you were, you were with three years each with, as town administrator in Pepperell and Harvard, and then after, then a few years after you were with Marlboro, and then it was six years in Ashland, seven here in Burlington, so I guess it's time for your next chapter. I guess Florida and the Red Sox are awaiting. So I've got two citations, one from the House and one from the Senate, they actually say the same thing, so you have to put them in different rooms. And I'll read only one of them. I'll read one of them and it'll, it'll be the House one. It says, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to John D. Patron in recognition of your 40 years of public service and your outstanding tenure as Burlington Town Administrator. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 25th day of February 2019 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts. In this case by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, offered by me, Kenneth Gordon, your state representative." And the Senate has issued a citation in the same language. Senator Cindy Friedman couldn't be here tonight, but she expresses her best wishes and good fortune. This is signed by Karen Spilka, the President of the Senate, who you worked with in Ashland, right? Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, Cindy Friedman, dated, same date. Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
I didn't want it there was good, 'cause the projector, so. Wait, I'm sorry, hold on. I didn't say anything, I wasn't sure if you wanted, I'm really aware. Stay right there.
Great, thank you. I just appreciate it. All right, for the record, I was looking at the agenda and Betty has allocated 10 minutes for this, so we're done. It's what it says and I can't.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
We acknowledge John's smile, but I just can't help but notice a smile on Betty and Sandy's face. So, they're smiling for some reason.
All right, since, all right, let's start in the front row, Marge?
Yes. Um, without getting too, too cheeried here, I wanna thank you on behalf of all of the seniors for the new spaces that you gave us and the uplift in the, in the building. It's, it's much improved and the seniors are using the new spaces and enjoying them and it's much more cheerful in there than it was before you came, and so we thank you for that. I know it wasn't exactly what we wanted, but it, it turned out pretty darn good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
Oh, let me just add, it was a pleasure working with you too.
Chris, any?
I wanted to echo something I think that Mike was saying in terms of, in the seven years that you've been here, you did, really did address a lot of things in terms of, look, if you're gonna do this, you've gotta, you've gotta have the supports to be able to do this, looking at sort of building and, and how to be able to accomplish those things. Purchase the building, we have a new building, thank you. We enjoy the space that we, we have, and as Marge had said, they enjoy the space that they have. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I love your sense of humor, I'm gonna miss that piece and really do wish you all the best. Enjoy.
Thanks. Sandy?
Well, like Joe, I have to be nice because Kim is here. For the past seven weeks, I've enjoyed having you sit behind me, throw spitballs at me, make comments every day, and I am really, really gonna miss you. Thank you for everything.
Andy, are you just sitting in the second row or would you like to say something?
I'm trying to think how I can put this politely.
Don't.
Thank you.
I never did.
I have sat back and have watched and listened to many topics and conversations and discussions that John Clancy has had with you. I'm only sad to say that your rapport you had with Mr. Clancy, you will not be here to sustain that rapport with me. You've been very fair, very honest, and forthright with our office, I appreciate that and the support, but the banter, I will miss. Thank you.
Uh, the fire department. Michael, go forward. Mike? No? You said you only had 10 minutes.
John, I just wanna thank you for supporting the fire department. Like Mike said it before, we have been asking and asking for years for additional manpower. You saw the need, you understood it, you supported it, and we're on our way. And again, the need for Station Two, you got it done. I mean, we're gonna open in a couple of months. Just wanna thank you for your support, for, for all the years, and good luck.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Kent? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
No, I'd just like to thank the boss, as I call him. We've had an interesting relationship over the last seven plus years, and I appreciate the support for the police department that has been constant, thank you. And I will reiterate what Mike said, you know, every time I, it seemed like every time we talked about an issue, I came away learning something, and that, that's true. And I'll have a few more things to say tomorrow night, but the one thing I will always say about John is, and, and, you know, just because of my position and his position, we've been involved in, in some things that, you know, were fairly complicated. Never, you know, the saying, never let him see you sweat. I've never once seen him flustered on any issue, no matter what it was. I mean, calm, cool, and collected all the time. And, you know, that, that is the one thing I will always remember, no matter how serious the, the issue was, you couldn't tell whether we were talking about the Red Sox or the serious issue, you know, just very calm, cool, and collected. So thank you, boss, I appreciate everything for the department and everything you've done for me.
Thank you, Chief. Notice any that thank me for a new station? That's, that's, that's the new guy. Forgot, wrong one. That's the new guy, gotta do that. John? Yeah, yeah. Depends whether we're translating or not.
He's gotta get one in before, doesn't he?
Well, first, I do wanna apologize to the residents of the town and everybody else present here. I happen to be in the search committee when John was chosen.
Just 'cause there was food there.
And somebody says, "It's only been seven years," I'm like, "Whew, I thought it was more like 20." But, no, it's, it's been fun and it's been good getting to know John and working with him as well. Particularly, I'm grateful for the way he approached the department, the job with us particularly. And I think that I speak for a lot of us when, when I said I'm grateful of, of the commitment and, and, and the showing up to all the places that we needed to be, and whether it was a heavy snowstorm, big blizzard, a water main break that we might've had, and, and John will tend to show up and support our guys during those events. And that's something that is good to see, it's not something that I've seen a lot in my years of work in the DPW, and I had over 30 years of doing that, so it, it's been, it's been great. And the support also to the entire community and the projects that we had over the years has been great, it really has been, and it's heartfelt when I say it. I know we joked a lot, but it's not easy to get to where we, we are right now with, and I don't wanna name all the projects and things we've done, but I think the community can see a lot of that, but I do appreciate that, John. Muchas gracias señor. I don't have any more time, so.
I see a former selectman, Dan Grattan, in the house. Dan, would you like to come up and say something? Yeah, look at this, he came, jumped right out of that chair.
When, I was on the board when John was appointed, and I recall, it was a very competitive field, and John stood out for a number of reasons, but something that we keep hearing over and over again was his, his human resources management. He came up with a lot of creative solutions, dealt with a lot of difficult problems, and really made the job of the selectman very easy, it always did. Reorganizing the DPW, you know, we had, we had issues dealing with infrastructure in the town, and he always created solutions. He came up with a way to reorganize it, worked with, with John Sanchez to, to get a lot of seemingly minor issues addressed, but things that have been accumulating over a while, so thank you, John. You did a great job and we're better off with you having been here, so thank you.
John, you wanna say anything or, yeah, come on up. We're gonna talk about the bullpen situation.
Well, actually, first I wanna thank you, you helped bring two World Series during your. That was awesome. What I'm really gonna miss most is your emails at Thanksgiving time. I mean, I think everybody really enjoyed seeing those. Also, you know, the Labor Day ones when you had to put your socks back on, but the Thanksgiving ones were especially good, and, you know, basically, your sense of humor is what, what, you know, you really kept everything loose and made, you know, the jobs, our jobs can sometimes get a little tense or, you know, residents can get a little, put pressure on us, but your sense of humor helps keep everything kinda light and we appreciate it, appreciate your support and good luck, and one more World Series next, this is coming up.
Thank you. Thanks, good luck. All right, and, Joanne? She's hiding back there.
I was gonna say, I didn't see your back there either.
Well, like, I can echo what a lot of others have said here, it's been a pleasure, I'm glad you chose Burlington as your, your last place before your next venture of retirement. I think we're better for having you here. I always say Burlington's a great place to begin with, but you've done so much good for us, and I can say, just like everyone else, I've learned a lot from you and I really appreciate the time that you've spent working here and thank you for everything.
Thank you, John. Paul, before I get to you, is there anybody that I haven't called on that would like to, to come on up and say something? Yeah, come on up.
This one, right?
Yep.
Hi, I've only been working for John directly two years. I'm not much of a talker, but I just wanna say on behalf of the IT Department for the town and also for the schools, thank you very much, you've been supporting us 100%. I didn't know that you weren't a fan of the Red Sox, otherwise I would have talked to you about Tony Armus, my personal friend. Good luck, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jose. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo, I too like John Sanchez, was on the search committee when we hired John, and I think there was a lot of, a little bit of nervousness. One of the things that he prided himself on during the interviews was having fired people over the years. I think amongst, I know I can speak for the department heads, that there was a little bit of nervousness with John coming on board, and it didn't take long for us to realize that he really was a big teddy bear. So, we were able to accomplish a lot, and I think the best part about working with John over the past seven years is we're able to laugh while we're working, and the best part about that is we're typically laughing at his expense. Really, is a guy that can take a joke and laugh at himself, and that's made, you know, the past seven years really enjoyable. I know I have big shoes to fill, and I'll, I'll let him finish off the sentence, he's gonna say you have a big waistline to fill as well, so. That's how I'll always remember John, is always having a joke, and again, made it a very enjoyable work environment for us here at the town, and, and we still accomplish quite a bit of work while enjoying ourselves at the same time, so just wanna thank him for that.
I'll finish it off unless somebody else wants to jump in afterwards, but I know myself, Mike, Dan, Chris, sitting in the chair position, I think have benefited greatly from your years of experience. I know that, like it has been said, I'm certainly a smarter person today and more equipped to do the job I'm doing up here because of you. And yeah, I, I wanna thank you, you know, personally for, you know, bringing the leadership to the town, and we did, we've accomplished a great number of things in the last seven years. I don't think we're finished, I think Paul's gonna pick up the ball and run with it, but I wanna thank you also personally for all you've done for the town and for us, so thank you. Thank you, Bob. All right. Thank you all. Oh, what, I didn't mean it, Betty, do you wanna say anything?
Yes, I too wanna, thanks, thank you, John. Thank you for picking me, thank you for letting me work with you. I've learned a lot, it's, I mean, anything, any questions I have, he's got it all right in here, and I truly appreciate it, and had a great time, but wish you great luck in your retirement.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, now your turn. Way to start.
Don't tell me you're speechless.
Just give me a second. Not speechless. You know, I, I appreciate, I'm sure there's some parts you're not gonna miss, you know, the looks from me in the middle of a meeting. You know, every once in a while, and I think you're, you're not toeing the line, you know, you get those looks, I'm sure you won't miss that, but this has been a great experience, so 40 years in a business, I couldn't have asked for a better place to end, you know, my last seven years in the business. This is truly a top-notch community, and it's because of the people, you know, and we talk about that, and, and I appreciate the board recognizing, you know, that's what we talk about all the time, I've always tried to make a point of it, you know, out of this chair, 'cause I think it's the responsibility of the person holding this chair to talk about our resources, and our resources are our people. And we've got a great group of people working for this town. We've had a great crew on the Board of Selectmen, now, that, that's, yes, that's, that's hard. Yeah, that, this is, you know, at the end, I can say it now, so I, I truly appreciate all the people I've been involved with, I've made, you know, a great decision coming here. My greatest decision in my life was being married to my wife, I have to say. You know, you know, Kim is my soulmate, the love of my life, and so, you know, I leave here knowing I've got someplace to land. Sorry. She's still working, so I am responsible for meals and laundry, you know, on a daily basis now, you know, so I've gotten my orders, but I've certainly been lucky in life, and, you know, my profession, this is my service and this is my profession, and I take a lot of pride in, in being a town administrator all these years and being involved in municipalities, and again, ended up here in Burlington at the end is truly joyous. So thank you all, and thank you all for the kind words tonight, and let's move on with the agenda. One, one, one quick item, yeah. Betty? What's going on tomorrow?
Oh, anyone's invited, the public is invited.
We are having, thank you, we are having a reception to congratulate John on his retirement. We'd love to have everybody attend, it's from 3:00 to 7:00, the Grandview Farm, and you are, you are gonna be there, right?
Well, he doesn't have to be, we can have the party without him. Is there food?
There's, there's food, so, so please, please join us, we'd love to have you.
All right. All right, thank you. Thank you. Oh, and you're working till Friday, I mean, till Thursday, right? Till Thursday, Thursday is my last day. I think they're ready to get rid of me at this point, from the intern position, they're so sick of my smile on my face this week or the last few weeks. The department heads? Any department heads that are here, wanna come up and have a photo?
I'll come over and help you out, don't worry.
How are you? I just assumed I had to sit in the seat. Yeah, you are. Did you?
Fine, he's going first. Okay, all right, here we go. It's done for me.
Okay. Kim?
Kim?
That was the fastest picture you ever took. Okay? We all back?
All right. Okay.
Do you wanna family picture?
Jim, you wanna picture?
Yeah, yes.
I'm pretty much.
Do you wanna try out the chair? No, takes off one, so don't want y'all's side.
Kim, have a seat.
Person really.
Why don't you sit?
There you go. Should we take a minute for those who chose not to sit through the rest of the meeting that you certainly may go?
Are you getting up to speak?
Tomorrow.
You can talk about the fire station?
What's that? Yes. Sure.
Okay, okay, good. Should photoball. Should photoball.
No, 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 just, just shoulder, shoulder. You wanna shake his hand, you shake his hand. Back over his jacket, there you go.
Yeah.
Paul, for all right.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. See you tomorrow?
What's that? He was supposed to, I don't, he doesn't wanna go. He said he can't go. Pretty sad, earlier, said that to Chris earlier, I don't know.
All right, 032, approval, Green Community Designation Grant Program. Who's speaking on this?
I'm starting, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. We have previously forwarded to you a summary of the Green Communities Designation Program that was prepared by Rachel Kaplan of Public Works Department. that was prepared by Rachel Kaplan of Public Works Department for your review.
There somewhere.
Just wanna provide a little bit of history of this program within the town. The town had previously considered this designation in approximately 2010, when the program was created by the Commonwealth of Mass. At that time, the decision was made not to pursue the designation due to two uncertainties. The first was that the town would be required to adopt the Stretch Energy Building Code, which is for the state criteria number five. At that time, the Stretch Energy Building Code was much more stringent than the ordinary building code, and there was concern that we would put the town at a competitive disadvantage for developers by increasing the cost of construction. Since that time period, the differences between the Stretch Energy Building Code and the regular building code have narrowed significantly. With every annual update to the regular building code, it gets closer to the Stretch Energy Building Code. We met with Mr. Clancy prior to his retirement, and he indicated that almost all new commercial construction within the town is already being built to the Stretch Energy Code. In addition, I spoke to an area home builder who indicated to me that they already build to the Stretch Energy Code in all the other communities they work in, and that buyers want energy-efficient homes when they're purchasing them now. In any event, I would urge you to discuss the Stretch Code with any of the builders and developers in town to get a better feeling for their thoughts on that. The second area of uncertainty at the time was related to criteria number three, which requires that the town purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles. If I recall the discussion at that time, it centered, there was fuel-efficient vehicles are relatively new at that time, and there was some uncertainty as to how well those vehicles would perform, whether or not the police would be required to buy electric police cars and things of that nature. Since that time, there is no more uncertainty. Public safety vehicles and public works trucks are exempt from this, and we are already purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles in all other instances that we have an opportunity to. The Green Community Designation and Grant Program provides a roadmap along with financial and technical support to municipalities that pledge to cut their municipal energy use by an ambitious and achievable goal of twenty percent over five years. Currently, there are two hundred and forty of the three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts are already designated, including all of our neighbors with the exception of Wilmington. Bill Ricker is entering in the current fiscal year. There's a map within the supporting documentation which sort of shows the layout of this across the state. Upon the town's acceptance by the state, we would immediately receive a designation grant of approximately $173,000. And from that point on, we'd be eligible for competitive grants of $250,000 a year, potentially eligible. Within the backup, it shows what some of our neighboring communities have picked up from this program over the period of time, and the amounts are very substantial. We've discussed it with our facilities people, and there are, there's no shortage of energy-efficient projects that we would already have on our capital plan, that these grant funds would be useful in funding and to take the burden off of the taxpayer, specifically if you think about HVAC systems and things of that nature. Selectment Tiggas was kind enough to sit through a long presentation from Mr. Neil Duffy from the Commonwealth of Mass who administers this program. Mr. Duffy is here this evening to do a presentation and answer questions from the board. You know, at the conclusion of the session, we would be requesting that the board consider giving us guidance as to whether this is something that we should pursue for the town. So with that, I've asked Mr. Duffy, he has a PowerPoint, and I've asked him for a brief presentation and to open it up for questions to the board. Mr. Duffy, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Paul, and thank you all for having me. I'm Neil Duffy, I'm the Northeast Regional Coordinator. I appreciate being in Burlington tonight on what is obviously a special night, so congratulations to you on a great career of public service. I will try to go through these slides quickly. A lot of these slides are from the presentation that I had given earlier to a bunch of people, but I certainly won't try to spend as much time as I did with them, but I know you've already been briefed, but please feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions. I'm gonna skip who we are. So, as Paul mentioned, there are now currently two hundred and forty green communities, designated green communities. We just had thirty new green communities come in last year, and we expect potentially probably in the range of twenty to thirty more to come in this year. The application is to become a green community is due usually at the end of October, so it'd be October of 2019.
It's okay, Betty.
Yeah, we can see, I can see it, okay. We're following along in the backup in front of us anyhow.
Yeah.
So, we provide grants and loans to qualifying communities up to $20 million a year, and those grants go to fund energy efficiency projects for the most part in municipal facilities. So, projects like LED lighting conversions, HVAC upgrades, new boilers, weatherization, and town-owned facilities, so this building, schools, police station, fire station, that sort of thing. To date, we've provided over $100 million in grants, providing projected savings to those cities and towns of $14 million a year. And of course, it's not only saved a lot of energy, but has also created quite a significant emissions reductions, equivalent of taking over 3,500 homes off the grid or 7,500 cars off the road annually. So just to give you a sense of what some of your neighbors have done, as Paul mentioned, you know, you're surrounded by designated green communities, many of which have been in the program for an awful long time, so most of these communities, Arlington, Winchester, Woburn, Lexington, Bedford, not only were designated, but then they've been able to take advantage of the competitive, our annual competitive grants and apply for substantial grant amounts year in and year out, and that's why they're starting to get to those numbers over a million dollars in grant funds received. Again, you would receive $173,000 if designated. That designation grant amount is based, it's $125,000, and then there's an adder based on your population and per capita income. So, the same formula applies for each city and town, so it just depends on your population, per capita income, on what the amount is. Once you spend down those designation funds, you would then be eligible for the competitive grants. So, to become a green community, there are five criteria. I'll walk through each one. I'll try to be brief and probably spend most of the time on the Stretch Code if you have any questions on that. So the first two criteria are really related to one another. The first criteria requires that you have expedited permitting for at least one of the three types of facilities listed on the, in the presentation. So you'd have to have as-of-right citing for renewable or alternative energy generating facilities or research and development facilities or manufacturing facilities. And what we've found working with your planning department is that it seems like the zoning that you have in place right now would likely fulfill that requirement, so we would just need a letter from the town's attorney stating as such that the zoning in place meets the criteria. There's nothing that we've seen that makes me think that you wouldn't meet it. And then, the second criteria is that the permitting process in place for these types of facilities would need to be expedited, and when we say expedited, it means that it can't last. There can be nothing in your permitting process that can take more than a year to issue a permit. The third criteria is probably the most work in terms of what we expect. We sometimes call it the term paper of green communities, and that is establishing an energy use baseline for the town and then developing a 20% energy reduction plan based on that baseline. If you were to apply in fiscal year 19, we allow the town to go back two years, so you could use fiscal year 17 as your baseline, and the reason we do that is we allow you to take credit for any projects that you've done recently. Like I think you've done a streetlight conversion recently. You could use that as part of your plan. I would say for Burlington in particular, just having worked with Rachel Kaplan in your DPW, and, you know, she's familiar with the online energy tracking tool that we offer for municipalities. A lot of your facilities are up there already, so creating that baseline would be a lighter lift for your town than most because you're already doing a lot of this already. So I think that more of the work would be on the reduction plan side and identifying those savings measures. One thing I wanna say before I move on to the vehicle policy about the energy reduction plan is important to remember that we think of that plan as a roadmap to 20% savings. It's not, you're not committing to the projects you're identifying necessarily, but you're showing us that you have a way to get there. So, while it's usually that plan is the basis for what you apply for your grants, you're not limited to the projects that are, that are part of that plan, and you're not, you're not committed to them in any way, financial or otherwise. The fuel-efficient vehicle policy is, you're required to purchase fuel-efficient vehicles that meet our fuel economy, the fuel economy standards that we set for all the vehicles that we deem as non-exempt. The exempt vehicles are emergency vehicles and heavy-duty vehicles over 8,500 pounds. So, like light-duty pickup trucks would be, would be non-exempt, like a Ford F-150 would be a non-exempt vehicle, but it also, it satisfies our requirements, so you could purchase a Ford F-150 under this policy, or a Ford Explorer, for example, meets the SUV criteria. So, relatively lenient fuel economy standards, and usually during the application process, if necessary, we, I can come out, meet with department heads, explain the policy to them a little bit more, make sure that everyone's okay with it, and that would need to be adopted by both the town and the schools. So the last criteria is the Stretch Code. Just full disclosure, the criteria, the way it's written in the legislation is that you need to minimize the lifecycle costs of new construction, but the only way that we know to do that, and the only way that any cities and towns have done that is to adopt the Stretch Energy Code. And so, I will talk briefly about the Stretch Energy Code, and then I think I'll open it up for questions. There are 250 cities and towns have adopted the Stretch Code. The, you know, there are 240 green communities, 250 have adopted the Stretch Code, so that's likely that, those extra ten municipalities are ones that will be coming in this year. They just passed the Stretch Code previously, so if you were decided to apply in the fall, potentially you could be adopting the Stretch Code in the spring, and then you could become a green community in the fall. The Stretch Code needs to be passed by town meeting, so other than if you had zoning changes, it's the only criteria that requires a town meeting vote. So really important to understand about the Stretch Code is that it only applies to new residential construction and new commercial construction over 100,000 square feet, or 40,000 square feet for conditioned spaces, so like labs or supermarkets, that type of thing. Additions, renovations, and repairs are exempt from the Stretch Code. That was not the case back in 2010 when you first, when the town first looked at this. There was, there were different requirements for renovations and repairs at that point. So, what the Stretch Code is, is it's really part of the base energy code. The base energy code allows for two paths to compliance, so if I were to build a home in Burlington today, I could follow two paths to comply with the code. There's a prescriptive path, and there's a performance path. In the prescriptive path, there's a checklist of certain measures that I have to do to comply, and then once I meet those, meet that, those items on the checklist, such as boilers of a certain efficiency, insulation of a certain R-value, that I pass. The prescriptive path also requires inspections during and after construction. The performance path requires some modeling of the home prior to being built based on the design and construction documents. It also requires inspections during and after construction, and then it requires modeling at the end of construction. So what the Stretch Code says is that you can only follow the performance path, and that's the difference in a nutshell. So when builders in the area say that they're already doing this is because, you know, even if they're not working, even if you're not a Stretch Code town, there are other towns that are Stretch Code communities, so they're doing it there. But also, anecdotally, we find that some, many builders find it, the performance path offers some flexibility that prescriptive path may not offer because you're just, you're approaching the home in a more of a systems way rather than having to do certain things, and as long as the home as a whole meets a certain, it's called a HERS energy rating, then you pass. I think, unless you want me to, I can start talking about why testing performance and continue on the Stretch Code, but I can also open it up to any questions you may have about all the criteria.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Jim, why don't you stop because you have some experience, you know, let's talk about the lighting and...
Yeah, not so many, so much questions, but when I saw this presentation, I said we would be unwise not to go forward with it. Our buildings, our new buildings would be much more efficient, would improve the environment, would improve efficiency as far as the new construction goes, and in the end, probably, and I'm not a builder, probably costs homeowners or business owners less money because the buildings are more energy efficient. They're actually saving money. When I saw that we were meeting, meeting just about every criteria already, especially with that look-back period, and realizing we did the streetlights and all that can be counted, and the fuel-efficient vehicles we got in place, we're almost there. And then, we met in December, there were 210 communities. Since December, 30 more have joined up and become green communities. I just think it's an extremely smart thing for us to do and move forward and improve the town, improve the buildings, improve the environment. So I really have no questions, but I think it is a win-win, and then the grant possibilities are out there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fortunately, a lot of the people that I would be talking to before we went any further happened to be in our room tonight. I was kinda, kinda scanning the audience from the building inspector, the DPW, police, fire chiefs are all here, and I didn't see anybody grimacing out there, or shaking their head, or giving us those signals that John off-camera gives us when we're headed in the wrong direction.
But if they, you know, they're allowed to, so if you wanna go ahead and grimace, please feel free to do it.
I guess the question I do have, Neil, is how is this funded, the grants and so forth? Where are you getting the funding?
Sure. Yeah, good question. So we receive our funding from, it's either Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which are called Regi Funds, or Alternative Compliance Payments, which are ACP funds. So it's, think of it as a ratepayer-funded program, not a taxpayer-funded program, meaning that these are fees that we all pay as utility customers. Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative is, Massachusetts along with almost all the New England states and some other states, created this pact years ago where generators could only emit so much in terms of greenhouse gases, and they'd have to pay into this fund annually, and there are quarterly auctions where the proceeds of that fund go back to the states, and they can use those... And they can use those Reggie funds as they, for energy programs like this. Alternative compliance payments are similar where the utilities in Massachusetts are required to have a certain percentage of the energy that they provide coming from renewable sources. And in order to comply with that standard, if they can't comply, they have to pay alternative compliance payments. And so in both cases, each year, those standards, in terms of the Regi, those standards go down. So it gets tighter and tighter. And each year, the renewable portfolio standard goes up, meaning they need to have more and more renewables. So they, they will keep paying into those funds year in, year out. But to answer your question in the most simple way, it's not a taxpayer funded program that is, you know, part of the budget discussions annually.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Joseph?
No, not right now.
Do we want to hear from you? I mean, anybody want to speak on any of the particulars here? Are we all good? Paul?
I'm good.
John, did you want to, you're allowed to still talk. I mean, I would like to hear your input on what you think of the, the concept.
So this has been an initiative that Paul has started, so I really have no input. I know he's worked closely with DPW and Rachel, you know, in this area. Over the years, I've had concerns on this, but I think they've been somewhat addressed. And I think it's an opportunity, you know, that Paul and, and Mrs. Sanchez are seeing, you know, you know, for this moving forward. So I think you're getting recommendation from staff to move forward here. And so I think that's, you know, what you can work with.
Quick question, is there some kind of a structural thing we need in town to keep track of it, to, to make sure we're living up to the standards?
Public Works is already utilizing the software package to track utility usage. And I believe it's the package that's required to sort of do much of the tracking of the energy work. So there is some work involved. I think we already have a pretty good head start on it. Rachel from Public Works has been doing a lot of this work up until this point. And the state will also provide us assistance in preparing that documentation for, to submit for the program.
Okay. When we approve this, should we do it tonight? What are the steps? What's the timetable?
So certainly, the, the most important thing at this point would be to, to make sure that the stretch code is on a town meeting warrant. Whether it's this spring or if you have a fall town meeting that occurs before the end of October. That would be the, that'd be the first thing to do now. And then it would be working with Rachel, the DPW. I could, I would be working with, with them to both help work on the baseline, but also start working out a strategy for, to figure out your energy reduction plan. I think in terms of stretch code, we could potentially have builders forums if you want. We do that in many communities where I can come out along with ICF International consultants that we work with. And they, they administer the Mass Save New Construction Program. And we just provide informational sessions for stakeholders in the area just so people understand what stretch code is and isn't. So those types of things right now would be the first steps. In terms of the vehicle policy, that, that type of stuff can wait. As I mentioned, we, you know, I can meet with department heads, make sure they're okay with it. But that, that really requires a vote by this body and then by the schools.
Any comments from anybody, any, what's the board's pleasure?
If there be no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with seeking designation as a green community and take the steps necessary with the town and with the schools and with town meeting and get that process in place.
All right, we have a motion by Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Neil.
So staff will work up for your presentation, because I'm in an I don't care mode. So they'll, they'll take care of that. And Mr. Sagrino will present to you at a future meeting the steps that are needed in order to basically move forward with the board's wishes here.
Okay. Oh thirty-three, discussion, DPW facility.
So this is a brief discussion on this matter. This has been worked up, we have two committees, we have a staff committee and we have a board committee on this. And so the staff is finishing its recommendations. Once that is done, that will come to the committee, the building committee, and then to the board of selectmen. One of the things that's being looked at at this point, and we're waiting for final numbers, is the fact that what we talked about at town meeting was two phases, funding it in two phases. But there might be an opportunity to save money by funding it in one phase, still constructing in two phases, still paying out the construction in two phases. But by having one contractor and one bidding process, there might be significant savings in that. So that is being worked up at this point by staff with recommendations. Joe is the board's member representative on the building committee. And that will go before the building committee and then it will come to the board. So there may be an opportunity to save some money here, you know, through phasing. And that would have to be done at the May town meeting if we get to that point. So we just wanted to present that update.
What's the deadline? Betty, what's the deadline for May town meeting?
Almost last week in March.
Okay.
Anything zoning, that was, it's not zoning.
So it's not zoning. So all you got to do is give the intent by the end of March. And then wording is taken care of, you know, by mid-March, basically, or, I'm sorry, mid-April.
No, the only thing I will add to it is that we do have a very good group on the building committee, which, you know, they will, they will be looking at what the plan may be and the savings may be prior to us actually recommending it to you for town meeting. So, and that will, that will definitely happen prior to us having to do any presentations to any committees before town meeting.
I'd like to commend recreation staff and DPW staff. A lot of work's going in on the full review of the project. There's been a lot of time spent with the architects to make sure there's a lot of aspects, you know, to this construction. Because we're talking about water, sewer, we're talking about dealing with facilities, recreation maintenance, central maintenance. Lot of aspects to this and a lot of pieces, so a lot of work's going into this. Mr. Chairman, if I can ask that we take oh three five next out of order on this. So oh three five sixty-one Center Street. So sixty-one Center Street, the project's been, it's nearly complete from the building side. But part of the project was to build a parking lot in the front of the building, which has been stated right along. So last April, Selectman Mirandia and myself and DPW staff attended a meeting at the planning board to put forth a proposal of that parking lot in the front. And we had basically, I thought, five members at the planning board in support at that point in doing so. We took their recommendations, we incorporated that into the plan. Well, we went to the meeting, Selectman Mirandia and I, Thursday night, and the planning board did not approve the plan as presented. They want to see less parking in that front, they want to see more of the green space kept. And so we certainly did not have agreement from the planning board. It was interesting meetings, so I thought I might get my first complaint from a board prior to my leaving the town, after leaving that meeting Thursday night. But, so what I did say was that I'd take it back to the board of selectmen and seek input. So I think in order to get, they were not going to approve the project. You know, we've talked about needing parking at that facility. So in meeting with Paul and John today, I think the recommendation is that the selectmen look to put together a working committee, you know, with various people involved. Get, make sure we get outside assistance to finally determine handicap parking for that facility. Put that together and come back in construction season for next year. So to get it done this year, we have to construct in the summertime because of what's occurring in there. And we're not going to be able to make construction season this year. I think many of us were looking forward to having the additional parking in front of that building, you know, or on that site to support sixty-one Center Street and to support Grand View. That's just not going to happen this year because there's no way we can make construction season, the bidding process and construction season. So I guess the recommendation from staff is that the selectmen form a committee, you know, of various parties to see what the options might be instead of just, you know, dropping the whole idea.
All right, could, could we have a suggestion of who that should be? Not tonight. A suggestion of who should be on that search committee for us to take a vote on at our next meeting, Paul? So that we can approve that at that time. I don't want to start doing that tonight without having a chance to see the list.
So with that, at this point, I'd like to say that concludes my aspect of discussion in tonight's meeting. So I'm going to, at this point, officially turn over my seat to Mr. Sagrino as the incoming town administrator. You've made an excellent choice in choosing Paul to be your next town administrator. He has been a, a great right-hand person to me this whole time. Working seven years, about five years as assistant town administrator, and has truly grown into that role. And, you know, made the decision maybe a year ago that he wanted to, you know, seek the position. And I'm glad it worked out that he is your, the town's next town administrator. So I just want to wish Paul well. And, you know, he can always call me and yell at me because I'm going to be blamed for everything moving forward. I, I get that concept, so I know Mr. Sanchez is going to blame you for a lot, you know.
I always done it, so.
Yeah, yeah, so nothing's going to change there. But he is going to miss my comments, you know, as we move forward. And hopefully Paul can learn to toss some digs, see, you know, as he moves forward to keep that tradition going that I started. So again, I'm going to turn my seat to Paul that is going to conduct through the rest of the end. So I'll be here through Thursday, and I enter my round tomorrow. So again, I truly want to thank you all. I want to thank my former board members for the opportunity to work for this town. It has truly been a pleasure and an honor to serve the citizens of the town of Burlington.
Riley's going to come up and see you.
And Riley's going to get, have to get used to the new landscape, you know, of, of the office. He's having trouble figuring out that I'm in the intern season.
Having trouble with your retirement.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you very much, and I'm going to leave at this point. And see you all tomorrow and turn the floor over to my successor. And again, Paul, I truly wish you well.
Thank you for everything, John, and please don't change your cell phone number. We'll have to call you for some, some assistance with a few things.
It'll go to voicemail probably, and then I'll have to decide when I call you back.
Fair enough.
Sorry, just don't change it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, John.
Gentlemen, thank you. Stay there for now, or, okay. We need to go back to oh thirty-four, DPW fees, John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had, we had been asked by the town administration to look at our fees to see how our expenses compared to our fees should be. And in doing so, we noticed that with new pricing for some of the equipment that we use for water meters, don't forget, we've had this meeting installed about ten years ago now, and we haven't changed those fees since. So we have three items that we're recommending for changing the fees and approving. One of them is the cost for a new meter and the MIU device. The MIU device is the radio transmitter that actually takes the reading from the meter that sends it over. So the increase will be twenty-five dollars from the current two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five. Then the cost of the MIU radio device to a hundred and twenty-five from the current a hundred. And the third one is also the minimum charge for meters provided by commercial properties, which is will also be a hundred and twenty-five. So it's pretty much a twenty-five dollar increase on those three fees, and again, which I haven't done in ten years.
Just to reiterate what John had said, during the budget process this year, we asked all departments to sort of review the fees that they were charging for various items. And I think the last time we did this was around two thousand nine or two thousand and ten. Just to compare with our other communities, I think in previous years, we sort of felt that being in the middle of pack on fees was a good place for the town to be. We don't want to be the most expensive place. But I think the, the idea of a fee is to sort of recover the cost of a service. So we do want to make sure that the fees are reflective of the service that's being provided for that fee. So we've asked all the departments to, to make a review. And Mr. Sanchez is bringing forth sort of the first changes that we've become aware of. But, you know, there potentially more to come in the future, so.
And these are legitimate increases for recouping the cost of the service?
Correct.
Any questions?
Just, just real quick, it should be noted, of the twelve fees that could be increased, only three increased. There are nine that aren't being increased at all, so I just wanted to make that point known, that nine fees that could be increased aren't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No problem with the fees, John, but compliance. We still have people out there non-compliant with these, with the meters, the MIUs and...
Yeah, that, we, fortunately, we do have some residents who we have a hard time trying to get in the properties to, to replace equipment. Yes, we do. Right now, we are rescinding notices to try to get to those homes. And particularly because a lot of the items that I believe you're talking about for any equipment that has failed is still in the warranty, which, you know, zero cost to us as far as getting the equipment back. So we do want to get to those places and, and replace that equipment that is, will be free of charge to us.
Well, you, you know, you know where I'm going with this, and I don't know, I don't, Mr. Mirandia, you know. We've got some people out there, John, who, year, two, three years or more, who refuse to let us in their homes to, to address the, the situation. I think that's unacceptable. I don't see anything on this fee list relative to that.
So, and you're correct, there is, and, and it's just not listed, we, there is one fee that the board did voted on, which I actually didn't update it because we were not changing that particular item for, that addresses that particular issue. It's just not, it's not shown here. We, we, the selectmen took a separate vote, and we just never integrated it into the master sheet that there is a fee to be charged for, for that as well.
Okay.
Maybe I should send that.
Just frustrated with, with some of those that I'm aware of. It's not fair to the rest of the folks in town who play by their rules. And I'd like to get more aggressive with, with those.
Yeah, on the suit.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
No, Mike said just about everything I wanted to say, so I'll let it go with that.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board as far as the increasing of the three fees?
Chairman, I'll make a motion, I'll go along with Mr. Sanchez's recommendation on those three fees of increase in twenty-five dollars each.
All right, we have the motion by Jim. Second by Joe. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And would you stay around to do your budgets since it's...
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, let us do the budgets. We'll start with DPW.
So our budget tonight, I don't know if you want to introduce it?
Sure, you mind if I start, John?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Bob. I know that the board's very familiar with the activities that fall under the DPW. Department is made up of six divisions, administration, buildings and cemeteries, central maintenance, engineering, highway, water and sewer. With the wind today, I think they were going pretty much every minute to a fallen tree or a fallen sign somewhere I heard on the radio today. They got sixty-five regular employees and sixteen seasonal workers. The department maintains the town's roadways, drainage, water, sewer, streetlights, traffic signals, town buildings, town vehicles and cemetery infrastructure. The department daily oversees service operations such as water, sanitary sewer, the Burlington Transit, B-line, trash pickup, as well as snow and ice operations. Couple of areas to note for the board, that in this budget, you'll notice a transition of sorts as the town begins the process of buying some water from MWR. as the town begins the process of buying some water from MWR accounting here. Uh, you'll see through an increase in the contract services line, uh, posing by some of the costs that we will, we will not be, uh, facing in our own water, uh, whether that be chemicals, uh, and the, and utility costs of actually making our own water. So there's some increases in some lines and decreases in some others to offset that. Uh, the other thing, um, this, this department, like the others you have seen, there are no settled, um, contract agreements for this, so there are no wages, wage adjustments reflected in the DP bud, DPW budget or any of the other budgets you'll be seeing tonight. And, uh, let's see, I have one more note here. Just to let the board know that for the past several years now, uh, John has mentioned to us that he may need some additional resources in the maintenance part of the water system. Uh, just something for the board to consider in the future, uh, that he, uh, this department may be, uh, requesting additional personnel in that area at some point in the future. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to John and Rachel for their presentation.
So, uh, very briefly, because, uh, I was talking to, uh, our future town administrator this afternoon about how a former town administrator used to take all my bullet points and now then I have nothing else to say and I'm pretty much there right now. Uh, I will, I will add a couple of things to, to our budget. Uh, yes, there is an upset when it comes to buying water from the MWRRA. Uh, as a, as a news, uh, to, to the residents and to the board, uh, the governor did, uh, sign into law, uh, last week, the approval for the town to be able to join the MWRRA, uh, which is good news to us. Uh, that's one step down. Unfortunately, we do have a lengthy, uh, environmental process that we have to work through before we actually be able to, uh, uh, take water from the MWRRA. But this one step, so this, this completed.
If, if, not doing that tonight, but could you kind of schedule a time to join us at a meeting to kind of go over where we are with everything again? Because I know things have been going on and I just want to make sure we in the community know where we stand.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. So, um, the budget itself is pretty much what we had in the past, is very minor changes except for, uh, two items. One of them Paul already mentioned about, uh, purchasing of the water. And so you see some minuses to some items and some pluses in other ones. Uh, but in addition to us, to, to that, uh, the only, only item that we are going up a little bit has to do with trash collection. Uh, we did add the condos to, to the budget and there is a cost to it as well as cost increases related to, uh, the, the CPI value, the consumer product index that has gone up substantially as well as the fuel, uh, in this, in these contracts, we have to pay for those add-on. So if you notice on the trash collection, there's a, this is a substantial increase coming up for, uh, for next year again. Everything else though is pretty much straightforward. We, we have very minor changes throughout the budgets, but I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I, I'm gonna open it to the board, but I just want to make note that, uh, the contracted services are up fourteen percent from last year. But going back just a couple of years, uh, we're, we're almost zero increase. Uh, so we, we went down and then the increase is based on that year going. So I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, the, the, the fourteen percent that we see in contracted services, that to be, that's what, we're gonna pay the MWRRA from that account. Uh, but if you look at the amount that we use in materials and supplies, although it shows only, uh, a two percent decline, uh, money-wise, is, is a comparable decline compared to the increase. So if you were to add the new costs in contracted services and then you minus electricity and materials and supplies, we'll be about even.
Okay, who wants to start? Joe, go ahead, Jim.
I have nothing right now.
Oh, you have nothing, I'm sorry. Okay, Michael?
Uh, actually, really, the only thing I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the, uh, a, a two point four eight percent increase, given the, given the, uh, additional cost, uh, with, with the rubbish, not only from, from the decision to pick up the condominium, but just the, uh, the new trash contract itself was, was, uh, kind of tough to swallow. So, uh, thank you both for sharpening your pencil and staying within the, below the, the guidelines. Thank you. No, I see nothing, uh, nothing for me to chew on here.
Okay, Joseph?
The only thing I'd say is, um, I'd like to, um, commend them for only going two point four. Like Mike said, with the new trash increase we have this year and everything we've done, uh, I think they've done a great job with this, so. Uh, it's kind of a no-brainer for me. Only because you have Rachel with you, that's why.
I was gonna say, is, is Rachel allowed to say anything about the process?
She loves to speak.
No, okay. All right.
She's here to answer all the questions you may have.
I have nothing to, are we approving the budgets tonight or are we taking the budget information and voting in another day or?
I think, uh, last week, last meeting, we voted, we actually voted them, so.
And we have a motion to approve the DPW budget at a two point four eight percent increase.
Oh, move.
Motion by Joe, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nice work, Rachel.
She needed a little work.
All right, the next one is MIS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have, uh, Jose De Souza and Joe Bonjono from the MIS department here, uh, this evening. Uh, MIS is one of the departments that we have a, a shared program with the school department. Uh, we have four full-time MIS employees on the town side. And, uh, this department is directed by Jose, who's actually budgeted and paid for out of the school budget. Uh, he directs all the town and school technology initiatives. Um, the employees in MIS provide the installation, maintenance and training of technology within all town departments. Uh, MIS maintains the town's cable fiber network, wireless network, voice-over-IP phone system. All the, all the members of this, uh, department are members of the A and P plan and thus there are no raises, uh, wage adjustments reflected in this budget. Uh, that will be determined at town meeting in May, whether or not, uh, wage adjustments, uh, will be approved. Something else to know about the MIS budget is that MIS budgets for all town computer equipment, uh, desktop computers, laptops, uh, monitors and printers and all the basic computer supplies are on a rotating schedule that, which has worked out really well, uh, since these guys took over that aspect of our operation. And the budget as presented, uh, shows an eight point three eight percent increase. Uh, this is really due to, uh, increases in the contracted services line item. The town has initiated, uh, through a warrant article, a new software product, uh, for our land use department called Viewpoint. Uh, town meeting approved those funds a few years ago. Amy Warfield has been coordinating that, that, uh, project. And what this soft, software does is allow us to keep track of permits, uh, particularly if you think of building permits as they flow their way through the system, uh, through the planning board, ZBA, all those land use departments are able to, everything's kept electronically and everybody is able to, to check in on the status of those projects. So the increase of the MIS budget is for the annual maintenance costs for that software, so that's a new item for us. Uh, so although their budget is up, it's really not their fault. That's just where we sort of, uh, budget for new software proj- projects that, um, transcend multiple departments. Uh, the other thing, just that you should be aware of is, uh, Jose and Joe requested some additional funding, uh, for an email archiving, uh, upgrade. Uh, we did not feel that we were able to support that for this current fiscal year, given the tight budget guidelines. But we do think it's important and we've asked them to submit that in next year's submittal. Under capital outlay, there's also an increase. And I think what, um, what you'll see there is that we've adjusted the amount of computers that are needed to keep the town on a four-year replacement program for those in the upcoming year. Uh, with that, you know, we can open it up to the board, uh, for questions for Joe and Jose on this budget.
Would you like to say anything first, Joe, or, I mean, Jose, I'm sorry?
I really think that, uh, Paul say everything what we had, we prepared to say. I think that we are more ready for, uh, um, questions. But just a little more, uh, explanation on this, uh, new component that we're gonna get into our department to, to pay would be the, I put it together for like this. For the new fiscal year, two thousand twenty, departments such as planning, conservation, building, as well as the towns clerk, have come with the initiative to implement the software application named Viewpoint Government Solutions to accelerate the process of routing, approving and issuing permits electronically. This new application will also enable citizens to apply, pay and track the status of their requests online. The annual support will start with twenty-five thousand one hundred forty dollars and the appropriation for such item will reside on the MIS department budget.
Will there be, with this new program, uh, will the, the different departments have to be looking at staff to, to work this? Or are we gonna be training our personnel or?
No, the existing personnel are all being trained and I, from what I understand, the benefit of the system is that all departments are able to check on a project and see, uh, what approvals are still needed, who hasn't signed off on something yet. Um, all the relevant information on a project will be available to all the users and I believe the public also, Jose, right?
Correct.
So it'll have, uh, an interface so that the public will be able to go on and check their building permit just to sort of see what the status of that as it moves to, moves through the, um, the system here at the town. So we're, we're expecting big things out of that software. Uh, Amy has been coordinating that, a town meeting funded it a year or two ago and I think employees being trained currently and they're getting pretty close to implementation on that.
Questions?
Just real quick on that software with the permits where the public would be able to access it, would it be the applicant only or could anybody from the public, uh, look at anybody else's permit?
I believe it'd be, um, the, whoever they submitting for a permit request, for example, would be submitted with some type of a key code that they can check it out. So it would be personally.
All right, so it would only be applied to the landowner, homeowner or?
The requested in this case, yes.
Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, a question for Paul. We have a few TIF agreements that are still active in, in town here, uh, and part of those, in those agreements, funding certain areas of town, um, are targeted. Is there any, has any thing been directed, uh, towards, uh, our IT department? Any of those, uh, TIF programs of, of funding?
I don't believe that there was any, um, parts of the agreements that, uh, reflected directly on IT. I do know that I think, um, one of the TIF agreements provided computers for the senior center, um, is that, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, so I think we've received some computers, uh, funding at the senior center. But typically those, uh, these guys aren't typically at the top of the list when it comes to, uh.
Yeah, I know with some of the pro, I know, I know some of these other departments out there receive little gifts during the year and so on and so forth. We- but whereas multiple departments are benefiting from the software that, that IT is purchasing, perhaps there's, um, it wouldn't be unkind to perhaps maybe redirect some of those other funds to help pay for that. Just a suggestion.
Well, we, we sort of struggle with this annually, just in terms of, is it better to try to break out all these softwares into the individual departments that use them? Or is it make more sense to sort of put them all in one area under the control of MIS? And, uh, like I say, the town meeting funded the actual purchase of the software through a warrant article and this is sort of the annual, uh, maintenance cost that was sort of required, annual support cost in order to sort of maintain and keep the software up to date and, um, have somebody able to, to troubleshoot on that.
I think we'll certainly benefit from that, that software. I'm an advocate for that, that, that particular program. I like that idea. I'm just looking at, again, where multiple departments are benefiting from it if there was, just for something to chew on, that's all.
I think, uh, MIS is one of those departments that people don't think of when it comes to sort of charitable endeavors. I think there's a lot of, uh, of, of other departments that pop into people's minds, uh, when it comes to, uh, deciding how they wanna, you know, make those donations. And, uh, unfortunately, I don't think MIS is one of those departments that, uh, elicits a lot of, uh, generosity from the community, so.
Good enough. Joseph?
No, just that, uh, it seems, it just seems like the, the biggest cost in this whole, uh, cause of that increase is that contracted service. That's, that's, looks like it's gone up quite a bit, huh?
Yes, that's the line with the support.
And do they go out and try to bid those out or is it just something that we have the same guys, you wanna keep them and?
Uh, this is actual, uh, cost from the software company for us to use it annually. It's, it's, it's an annual recurring cost.
Right, thank you.
Paul? Do we have a motion?
Uh, well, I'll make a motion. What, what's it again? Eight point what?
Eight point three eight percent.
Make a motion to approve the, um, well.
MIS.
MIS budget at eight point, uh, three eight percent.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero. All right, we'll make sure Betty knows that. Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Building Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next budget up for review is the Building Department. Um, this is a budget that has some significant changes for two thousand and twenty. Um, as the board knows, we said goodbye to, uh, longtime building inspector John Clancy a couple of weeks ago. And in John's absence, you have appointed Andy Ungerson as our interim inspector of buildings. Uh, the board has always been aware of the pressures, uh, facing this department, given the incredible volume of development that's gone on for many years. In an effort to address that extraordinary workload, uh, almost two years ago, the board supported, the town meeting approved a warrant article to provide an additional, uh, inspector. And then, over that period of time, we were gonna try to determine, um, is this workload that we're experiencing in the Building Department temporary or is it more of a permanent? I think at that time, uh, we really sort of felt as though it was a permanent increase in the workload. But we did wanna at least, uh, do it on a trial basis as a warrant article in order to just ascertain that we were, we were on target in terms of that this wasn't, uh, uh, this, this type of building activity wasn't gonna go away in two years. And, and we're very confident that the, the level of activity, uh, Mr. Clancy has provided us with information that ongoing and known projects, um, were stacked up for the next several years worth of work in the Building Department without anything even new coming in at this point. So, um, the budget before you, um, includes the addition of that inspector, um, into the Building Department budget. Past two years, that, that position's been paid for out of the warrant article. It's decision time now as to whether or not we, our intention is to make that a part of the Building Department budget. Uh, we do feel it's warranted. Uh, Mr. Clancy provided us with plenty of information from our neighboring communities and how they staff their building departments. And I can tell you that, um, we provide similar or less, uh, service in our Building Department than most of those communities. And most of those communities don't have the level of activity that we have in our Building Department. So we feel it's warranted at this time. Uh, the budget i- in front of you includes one additional personnel that we've had. Uh, they've actually had the staffing the past two years, but that person's been paid out of a warrant article. Uh, we're moving that, um, employee over into the operating budget on a permanent basis. And, um, you know, we're able to sort of show, uh, due to Mr. Clancy's retirement and the change of personnel there, that it doesn't, uh, necessarily show up as a large budget increase for us this year. But I just want the board to be aware that there is a request in there for one additional inspector. And with that, you know, I will turn it over to the board. Uh, Mr. Ungerson's here to answer any questions you may have on the budget.
Uh, Joe, one quick one. Do you see much increase, um, in what's gonna happen in your department with the life sciences, uh, maybe coming knocking at our door in the near future?
Yes, if you look at, um, I had you a handout for you earlier, uh, before the meeting started. And life sciences is certainly one of the growing trends. Um, and I think you'll see that that will happen within the town. Potentially in the next couple of years, you're looking at, at estimated construction value of about another four hundred and ninety million dollars in construction. There's a list of, uh, projects that you'll see, uh, there that, um, are on the, uh, seat, ready to go. We don't see from the traffic that we have coming into our office or via phone calls that the trend that this town has been experiencing in the last several years has it declining whatsoever. Community's very lucky, it's a hotspot. Everybody seems to wanna set, uh, uh, a place of business or set the roots here. Construction is commercially wise is certainly very active, but, um, you can tell by the amount of run, uh, of new homes being constructed in town that, uh, what we experienced in the last couple of years. we experienced in the last couple of years, uh, at the rate we're going this year, we're gonna have the same trend for, for this year to come as well too for new homes.
Questions? Well, it's, Joe?
No, um, I just wanna commend these guys for what they do, if you ever go in their offices and just see the set of plans and of everything that, that's being built in this town, it's absolutely incredible, um, hire the new guys, it's gotta be a great asset for you, um, I, my question is, do you have enough help?
I'm sorry, Joe?
My question is, do you have enough help?
At this present time, no, with the absence of, with the absence of Mr. Clancy.
Right.
Um, and, um, um, uh, my trying to fill his, uh, uh, void, um, that leads me away from, uh, some of the other duties that, that I had, um, and just trying to, uh, uh, keep your other two, my other two, uh, inspectors going, um, um, it's, it's, uh, uh, right now, we're facing some challenges.
Well, that's my, that's my biggest things, I mean, for, for, for what they do in town, for everything they have, I, you know, um, I, I, I'd like to tell you to hire two more, to be honest with you, but I can't say that, I can't say that in public.
Yeah, I can just point out for the board, uh, some of our neighbors and with this budget brings the total department personnel from seven to eight, uh, if you just look at a total comparison of the number of, the head count in other communities, Lexington has ten, Waltam has thirteen point five, uh, employees in their Building Department, and like I say, I, I would challenge any of those, uh, communities that we have much more building activity, or as much or more than, than, than both of those communities, so I think these guys have, uh, men and women of this department have been doing, uh, yeoman's work for many years, and I think it's, 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 uh, long past due for us to supplement their department with this inspector.
Right, and moving forward, could either or both of you put together a summary comparing the thirteen people in, would you say Lexington or whichever?
Waltam.
Waltam, and what it is those thirteen people are doing as compared to our eight and just have, so we have that information in front of us moving forward?
I can email that to the board, uh, this week.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
How, how's that impacting delays, in other words, uh, residents having problems getting permits, are we backed up that bad?
I have to, uh, uh, we're not backed up that bad, we're, uh, getting things out within the thirty day time limit that, uh, was established by, uh, code, um, but, uh, that's putting a lot of pressure and burnout on the staff to, uh, try to coordinate, uh, that and, and their time to, to get everything done in a, in a timely fashion through the course of the day, um, uh, it would certainly help with additional people or person, uh, to, uh, uh, take on the flow with, uh, following up on zoning complaints, um, or following up in complaints in general, um, the town is experiencing a large growth in, um, food service establishments, many of these, uh, establishments are, um, uh, we had the same type of growth fifteen, twenty years ago, and at that time, we were able to bring on a third inspector based on the fees that we were able to generate from annual inspections of these type of establishments. These last couple of years and then the next couple of years, I see another exceptional growth within food services or places of assembly or places of which are gonna need annual inspections required by law, and, um, we don't have the manpower to keep up with just those.
Chairman, just, that's, I wanna kinda echo what Joe said, that we're, we're going strong, we continue to go strong, but busy, uh, doesn't look like it's slowing down, it looks like it's gonna even bet busier, so what Joe mentioned.
The last six years, um, the last five years have been the busiest five years this community's had in, in total construction, and the number of inspections, the number of complaints and, and what we've produced, the next couple of years, I see them competitive to what we've had just in these last five years.
Also combined with Mr. Hogan suggested, comparing, uh, area communities, I think maybe your department should be looked at i- i- for efficiency and maybe let us know what you need, or see what you can do.
Well, I know the board, uh, knows that we don't take the addition of additional personnel to the town payroll very lightly, we take it very seriously, um, you may recall several years ago, uh, we took the employees of the Building Department from thirty-five to forty hours, so we tried to, um, pick up some of the slack in that way, uh, the workload continues, uh, so we added in the warrant article two years ago, um, it's, you know, we're approximately a year and a half through that, that process now, so we do really feel at this time that, that that position is warranted, and we'll continue to monitor it as we go forward, just to make sure that we're providing the right amount of resources to, uh, to keep the process going efficiently in the Building Department, it's very important to the town, so.
I wholeheartedly agree that with that position, my question is like Joe said, is it enough?
Uh, I, I would just, um, take caution, um, when I first got on the board, um, uh, someone made a suggestion and some of the members of the board acted upon it and kinda threw chaos into the, to the conversation about, you know, budget time, and I think it's great that we have the conversations, but I think we need to make sure that we're on solid ground, yeah, we can all sit here and say, we agree that ABC needs more people, but we need to have the conversations to make sure we're on solid ground before we move forward on any of those actions, and it happened once and it was just, it was kind of chaos for a while.
Especially since the board has, uh, set such stringent budget guidelines, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was it, just an observation.
Michael?
I'm fine, thank you.
Alright, any, uh, anything else, we, we have a motion on the?
I'll make the motion, but I do have a comment afterwards.
Go ahead.
Um, I make a motion to approve the budget of minus one point seven nine percent, is that right?
Yep.
Yep.
Does the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
For the discussion, Joe, do you wanna comment?
Uh, no, the only comment I have is, is, once this is all said and done and you go to, ask, you asked for emails, uh, you asked for, um, uh, from Paul, about what the, what each guy does or what they do and stuff like that, I wanna make sure that Andy's on board with this, that, uh, that, I would just like to look into the fact of, do we, does Andy's staff need more help, what would, what would the cost be, how much would it take to bring somebody on, are they, um, are, are they a full inspector, are they under inspector, they have all the rights, uh, I know some of the people aren't, are they getting their, they're getting their plans on time, but the inspections, it's boom, 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 and if one guy doesn't show up to be, the, the electric guy isn't there, then it's, okay, now we gotta reschedule this one, so the stress that puts on these people makes it really hard, so that's where I wanna go with this, I wanna see if you could put together a game plan to find out, uh, what it would cost us or the town to hire another inspector.
Very good.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, or a negative one point seven nine percent increase for the Building Department, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eighty-four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Alright, HR.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, you all know Joanne Faust, who serves as our human resources director, uh, this department provides all human resources support for both the town and the school department, uh, HR provides all departments with support in the area of hiring, including recruitment and selection, compensation comparisons, and beyond that, once an employee is hired, they provide assistance with benefit programs, training, employee development to the town and schools, almost nine hundred plus employees. Department also assists our health insurance committee with, um, other members of our staff, the treasurer's office personnel, and working on the town's health insurance program, uh, Joanne also sits through contract negotiations with our union groups, and she administers the town's workers' compensation program, um, there are two employees within the town side of the human resources budget, both in the A and P plan, and thus there are no wage adjustments budgeted in this budget either, um, we currently share the cost of Joanne, uh, with the school department, we pay fifty-eight percent, schools pick up forty-two percent, so you'll notice that reduction, uh, reflected in here, so the number you'll be voting on is just sort of the town share of Joanne, uh, Joanne's personnel budget, the, the remainder comes from the school department, so, uh, with that, uh, this essentially is a level service budget, and we present, Joanne is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions for Joanne?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. This budget is zero point fifty-five percent, is there much to discuss?
Okay.
Pretty easy one.
You get a big bang for your buck.
Yeah, that's. I wanted to say that, but I didn't think I could.
No, I'm fine.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget, uh, zero point fifty-five percent.
Do you have a second?
Second.
By Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Alright, Eric, we'll get to the good ones now. Police is up first, chief?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Paul?
I gotta spare the board, um, too much, you know these guys very well, thank you for being here, the two chiefs, um, one important thing for this budget that I wanna point out for the board, you'll note that, uh, there are no wage increases, uh, we have unsettled contracts for next year, and just to point out, one key factor here is, we're in year four of a five-year plan to add one additional police officer a year, so it seems like yesterday that we initiated that program, uh, based upon a study that the police department did on, on the call volume and service calls, uh, but within this budget, there's one additional police officer, and I believe we have one more year to go on that program, and then we should be at a, a fully staffed, uh, based upon the work that they had previously done, uh, with their report, so, uh, that's the key, uh, factor of this budget, and I can turn it over the rest of it to, to the two chiefs to answer any questions that the board may have.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to, to jump in, he's not here, but, uh, both Chief Kent and, and John were instrumental in changing the way we hire police officers in this town, and, uh, uh, proud of the little part that I was able to play in that, but, uh, uh, you know, we've got an extraordinary department, um, the, the training, the skills, um, the diversity of this department, uh, I speak volumes, and I know a lot of other communities turn to us and point to us and say, you know, let's do it like they do it, or why can't we do it like them, so I wanna congratulate you, chief, and everybody in the department for, for getting that going and keeping it going.
Well, thank you, the, um, I'm fortunate, the, the, our hiring process, um, Deputy Chief Brown took the bull by the horns when he was lieutenant and basically, uh, formed that whole process, and, uh, it's amazing, I think, the, the level of, um, people we have come before us, uh, and, and Paul will see that going forward when we're interviewing in a few weeks, actually, so, um, Lieutenant, um, Deputy Chief Brown just did a tremendous job with that, so thank you.
Go ahead, start the budget.
So Paul kinda touched on it, we're in year four, adding a, um, another officer, um, this budget actually comes in at point one two percent, uh, because there are no salary increases, um, just a couple of increases within the budget, M and S, um, uh, we're adding a four point five five percent increase, which is three thousand dollars, which is to buy additional tactical medical kits that we can deploy in our cruisers, Jimmy and Mike knows, uh, the importance of those, we currently have three, we wanna add them to, more to the frontline cruiser, so, um, you know, should we get a catastrophic incident, the officers have the ability to, to strap those on and go in, and they have the medical supplies to address a, a, a large casualty type situation. We have an increase in capital outlay, uh, four point two seven percent, or nine thousand dollars, and that's essentially, um, for our three police cruisers, we've been level funded for the last five years on that, as we all know, things don't go down in price, they're only going up, and contracted services is up eleven point six eight percent, or, uh, fourteen thousand, and that is for a software system, um, for details and overtime, um, it's a tracking system that assists us in scheduling, filling the details, tracking, accounting the details, and most importantly, collecting the money that is due to the town, um, which in the past has been problematic, we weren't particularly efficient, this system, um, um, is, is a godsend, actually, it is, it is working out, uh, uh, better than we ever anticipated, so this is the, um, the software for the coming year to keep the system in place, we kinda, um, purchased it last year with some money we had left over, but, uh, that's a fairly substantial price, but, um, it's money well spent, and it's gonna make us a lot more efficient and make sure we're collecting all the money due for the town coming back in, so, um, there's a couple other little increases in here, but, um, uniforms is, um, special accounts is up point seven two percent, and that's essentially for, uh, clothing for, um, new academy, officers going to the academy, required clothing has went up a little bit, but, uh, um, basically a zero budget, however, it's a very workable budget, and it has some tools in there that we need, and, um, you know, if approved, um, we'll be able to get.
Uh, no, just the warrant funding request, um, we do have a warrant funding request that's been submitted for about, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars and change, and that's to upgrade our cell camera system and add an additional cell camera to the end of the booking hallway for increased security and safety, and also to upgrade our duofob security system, the program, and also add a couple of new doors, uh, to the system, one being evidence and the other being the shift commander's office, and also IT, just for accountability purposes, so that's been submitted for the, for the warrant.
No, so the?
Michael? Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see you addressing the, the, uh, the detail, um, issue that, that comes up year after year after year in our, our management letter from our friends at, uh...
I was telling them, yep.
... So that, uh, I'm very pleased to hear that, and I, and I hope it works well for you, by the way, I know that's been a thorn, I know you, thorn for you guys as well, uh, otherwise, no, very manageable budget, uh, as I said, uh, you know, you, you, you brought the overall budget increase one point five percent, I think that's very good, and, uh, to be congratulated for being so thrifty. Jim?
Other than saying they get some really talented people working for, I'll abstain from this one.
Uh, actually, uh, Jim and I and one of the members of the fire department, uh, yesterday were at an event, a large event, and, uh, a, an individual had either a seizure or some incident in which, um, uh, the member of the police department that sits on the board and the firefighter were, were, uh, immediately on site, and they were able to, to help relieve some of the anxiety of the individuals, and then the department ambulance showed up, but, uh, uh, it was nice that he was there and just able to jump into action, so it, it wasn't, it wasn't the same as, uh, the extraordinary work that was to get that gentleman out of the dumpster and out of the, you know, the, it was just a gentleman that had a, 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 a seizure-y fit or something, and there were people there who qualified to address the situation, to calm everybody else down as much as the individual who had the attack, so, um, so there are some good people working in that department. Uh, I have nothing, um, it is a good budget, um, anybody have a motion that they would like to present for the approval of the budget for the police department?
I make a motion to approve, uh, police department budget, is there, oh, yeah, zero point?
Zero point one two percent. Give a motion. Second by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Right, three, four, one up, six. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, boys.
Fire department.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have Chief Yetman and Chief Patterson here to talk about the fire department budget, uh, I know you're getting tired of me saying this, but there are no settled contracts, uh, related to the fire department budget for, for next year, so there are no wage adjustments reflected in this budget, as the board knows, over the past couple of years, uh, we've added nine additional personnel to the department, uh, eight firefighters and, uh, EMS coordinator, um, as we've seen those positions, we've noticed an, an, an impact on the overtime for the department, and that's reflected in this budget, you'll see that as one of the major cost drivers of this budget, uh, the second major cost driver for this budget is we have an estimate for the utility costs for the new facility that we hope, um, we expect to open up in the spring, uh, so we've been provided with engineering estimates as to what it's gonna cost us to heat and have elec- electricity in that, in that building, uh, the building is, uh, certainly much more energy efficient than the previous station, but it's, it's also much larger, so there is, uh, some anticipated increase in utility costs there, um, before we turn it over to Chief Yetman and Patterson, uh, we say goodbye. to Chief Yetman and Patterson, uh, we said goodbye to John tonight, but, uh, just also want to note that this is, uh, probably Chief Yetman's last time appearing before you to present his budget as well. Uh, he'll be retiring in the upcoming months. I know he's, most people probably aren't too sad that they don't have to come back to the selectmen, uh, for these, these types of, uh, issues. So I just wanted to point out that we'll be going through, uh, a series of lasts, uh, for Chief Yetman in the upcoming months between last selectmen's, last ways and means, and last capital budget committee type meetings. So I just wanted to point that out, um, for the viewers at home, and we can open it up to, uh, questions for these two gentlemen now.
Uh, one quick question to start with. Um, how, how does the occupancy numbers, as far as heating and electricity, compare to the present main station? Can I apologize for dumping that on you in the middle of?
Yeah, all of a sudden. It's... Electricity costs are projected to be about a third of what headquarters is.
Okay.
And heat will be a little bit more. Um, like Paul said, I mean, we're going from basically a thirty-five hundred square foot station to a station that's sixteen thousand five hundred. Here, it's four times the original building. Um, we did do some engineering, um, requests, and we got that from our, uh, architect firm and our project manager. Uh, we've had discussions with the Chelmsford Fire Department because their headquarters, which is now two or three years old, is comparable size. Uh, we also, uh, one of the, uh, when we started our process, we toured the North Andover Fire Station, again, a station that just opened two years ago, about the same size. So these numbers look pretty good.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, it's a substantial increase, but it's, you know, we're also increasing the size of the building fourfold.
Okay. Questions? Don, Mike, you're on, sir?
None.
Okay. Um, anything you want to point out that?
Um, well, the total overall budget increase is one point nine percent. Um, again, the, the drivers are overtime. Um, we currently still have some vacant positions, and that affects our, our need to fill overtime. Uh, we are right now down two positions, we have two guys with a, uh, a two-five potential candidates with, uh, conditional office of employment, but we're looking at academy spots of probably October, November, December. So we're going into this fiscal budget with two vacancies, and in the next fiscal year, we'll end up having two more, um, based on retirements. And we actually have a person that's leaving us, uh, for a lateral transfer. So somewhere in this next fiscal year, we could have five vacancies of different lengths of time. So that kind of drives the overtime up a little bit. And, yeah, again, the other thing is, is, uh, the occupancy costs for the, for the new station. Other than that, it, it's pretty well level funded. Special accounts, we have twelve items, um, eight of them are level funded. Um, the only, uh, significant, like in contracted services, the only, everything's all funded except we added an item, and I can let the assistant chief talk on that. It's, one of our warrants is for a CAD system, uh, uh, an upgrade from where we've been, uh, for decades, and I'll let Mike speak on that. This is, this is going to be a reoccurring cost. I have the warrant for the, the program itself, and then the, the cost will, uh, appear in your contracted services going forward.
Yeah, sure. Just real briefly, um, this past year, we purchased a, uh, fire department data management software program. Uh, we're in the, we're going to be in the, hopefully in the process of rolling that out, uh, in the spring. Um, however, uh, moving ahead, that line item will pay for this software system on an annual basis. And then, uh, we're going to be presenting a warrant article, uh, at May town meeting, um, that, um, it's a, another software program, uh, that would tie into our, um, data management system, um, which I can discuss at a later time, probably.
Yeah, please, just so we're aware of what's, you know.
Sure. I mean, we, we've been kind of operating like cavemen, uh, for the past several years, and, uh, you've heard a lot of talk about new software tonight from new departments. Uh, and we're trying to upgrade our data management, our record keeping, uh, our response data. Uh, we're trying to upgrade that as we move forward, so.
And I mentioned last meeting when March was here, that, you know, we've tried to do our best to keep things conservative over the last number of years, but you, you get to a point where some of these things are absolutely necessary, and you can't continue to keep putting them off. And, you know, again, um, that TV commercial, it's so easy, even a caveman can do it, shouldn't apply to, you know, fire service.
For them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Do we have, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion on the budget for one point nine one percent for the fire department?
I'll make a motion that we approve the fire department, uh, with a one point nine one percent increase.
All right, we have a motion by Jim. Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, four, and one abstention. Gentlemen, thank you. Do we have a?
Emergency manag-
Emergency management, okay.
Just go directly to Chief Patterson on that one.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Chairman? Sure, uh, thank you, Paul. Um, as you're all aware, um, the fire department has overseen emergency management for the past several years. Um, this budget that's in front of you tonight, um, is basically level funded, uh, a zero percent increase. Um, a lot of the, um, the, uh, line items remain the same from, uh, the previous last year. Uh, the primary drivers behind emergency management, um, is salaries, uh, which remains the same from last year. Uh, expenses, uh, which, um, is eighty-one hundred dollars, stays the same. Uh, just a real brief, uh, narrative on, on what we do is, um, over the past several years, a lot of the, uh, supplies that I've been, uh, purchasing are, uh, for shelter-related, um, supplies. If, you know, if we ever had to open a shelter, we need to equip it, uh, as well as staff it. So, uh, a lot of the expenses, uh, uh, in this budget, uh, would be for, uh, sheltering supplies. Uh, and then finally, um, the other item is training. Uh, we have a good working relationship with the Board of Health, uh, Director Luminello. Um, they have a pretty robust, uh, medical reserve corps, uh, and we, uh, we try to train our medical reserve corps people, uh, to operate, um, in different functions within a shelter. Uh, so that's what the training money is there for.
All right. Zero percent increase. Does anybody want to make a motion on the budget for EMS?
I'll make a motion that we approve emergency management budget with a zero percent increase.
Second? Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number oh-three-seven, Town Administrator as Deputy Local Licensing Authority. Paul?
I'm going to turn this one over to Betty. This is, uh, her request, and she's, uh, the most fluent on this one at this point. So with the, um, with the new town administrator coming in, we want to approve, um, the previous town administrator, John Petron, as being the, uh, local, um, uh, local licensing authority. And what that means is, um, certain applications come in for small changes and applications for local licenses, such as requests for management, new, uh, new changes in, um, de- directors, things like that. And it doesn't have to come before the full board, is what was decided at a previous meeting. So you can discuss, if you're, um, figure out if you want to move forward and continue this. It's worked out very well so far. It gets, um, applications out quicker. We don't have to wait for, uh, a meeting to, to come up, and, um, we found it to work just fine.
And as our background shows, um, we approved John Petron, uh, March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, and it has become very efficient. Joe and I are on the Subcommittee for Alcohol, uh, Licenses, and, uh, if you want to speak to it, Joe, I think it works out well.
Hey, it works out fantastic. Yeah, we don't have to meet on every single one of them that's coming in or introduce them. They-
No, if I have a concern, I call.
John's done a great job with it, so, you know, all we're really doing is transferring it over to-
Not only that, it saves the applicant the time and expense of having to appear for us. I, I think it's a, I think it's a win-win.
We'll make Mr. Sagarino take baby steps into this position, so he's doing a great job, and give him another pos- another job.
I just want to remind the board that I'm also the enforcement agent on plastic bags as well, so.
Right, too.
I may need a badge of some sort if you're going to keep, uh, giving me these powers.
Or your designee. It says, or your designee, right?
We'll designate the chairman of the board to enforce the badge.
We're getting badges.
All right, do we have a motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Mr. Sagarino as the Deputy Local License Authority? Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Thank you, Betty. Thank you, Paul. All right, uh, Subcommittee reports. Start with Jim.
Uh, not really Subcommittee report, but I'll just defer to you because you're a member of People Helping People, but other than the medical emergency that happened yesterday, how wonderful an event that was. I don't know if you wanted to-
Oh, you go right ahead.
Well, again, People Helping People had the annual wine tasting, um, at the Cafe Escadrill. Uh, Bob Murray from the Escadrill donated-
Everything.
Everything. And all the profits, all the prizes, uh, everything, all went to People Helping People. It's one of those, it's not an a- a- agency, but it's one of those things in town that we have that you don't know about until you need them, and they help so many people in so many ways with food, fuel assistance, um, just everything. So the, it's just a wonderful organization run by wonderful people, and yesterday was, again, with the, with the medical emergency aside, it was a wonderful event, a great fundraiser for them. Um, sold out, and they're looking to expand it next year, I think, so, to have more people come. But again, it's just another great Burlington, uh, event to be at.
Michael?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, all I would like to say is I look forward to many, uh, successful years, uh, with, uh, Paul Sagarino, uh, sitting in that chair over there. Next time we get together, congratulations to you, and I-
Thank you very much.
-forward to, uh, working with you in the future.
I will work hard for, for you guys, so.
No doubt in my mind.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, um, Mike just said it all. It's going to be different, a lot looking this way, looking this way now. I wonder if I'm going to get the same looks that I used to get.
Mr. Morandi, please.
Town administrators report?
I just have a couple items, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first one is, I forwarded an email to the board about, uh, the town scholarship committee that you guys appointed a couple of weeks ago. I know that, uh, Selectman Hotling's been, been working with that committee, and he has an update for you, so, uh, we'll just pass that along to the next meeting. But I just did want to acknowledge it, because I know that they, uh, were perhaps watching the meeting, waiting for, for an update for the community, but we, we can hold off on that one to the next meeting. Uh, the second, uh, item I always wanted to, uh, bring up to the board, I forwarded you an email from the planning department. Um, they're doing a municipal vulnerability prepar- preparedness planning event. Um, it's on Wednesday, March sixth. Uh, anyone who has a stakeholder in the community, has an interest in, in climate change and how it may impact us here in Burlington, um, is invited to attend that. Uh, they, they will be serving lunch. That's, uh, March sixth at the Grand View, uh, between ten and two. So if any, uh, members of the board, they're trying to get members of, uh, elected officials, appointed officials, town meeting members, or any other stakeholders in the community who have an interest in this area to sort of participate in this forum. So, uh, just wanted to bring that up. And then just lastly, Betty covered it earlier this evening, but, uh, there'll be a coffee, uh, tomorrow, uh, honoring Mr. Petron, uh, from three to seven over at the Grand View Farm, and that is open to the public as well. So we'd love to see, uh, people come by to wish him well on his new, on his new endeavor, uh, of retirement. So that's all I have, uh, for the board this evening.
I have nothing. Do we have a motion to return? I'm sorry.
We need, we need an executive session tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, you're absolutely right. Betty, do you want to take a role on, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining?
Yes, I will. I'm going back to my, yes, we need to, um, open an executive session, uh, with a roll call vote in order to, to, um, discuss a part, I don't have a, I mean, in order to discuss our contract.
Right, would you?
And we'll be the fire department-
And then not to repor- return as Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Correct. So, um, Jim Tigges, do you wish to enter into executive session?
Yes.
Mike, Mike?
Aye.
Bob Hopkins?
Yes.
And John Morandi?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have to meet at eight oh five, and you will come back?
No, no, we won't. We're there.
No, they won't come back.
You can close it.
Yes.
You're on the meeting.